Hello, I'm Walt Johnson. I'm very proud to be the mayor of the city of Titusville. It is at times like these that make me very thankful to live in our community. A community that knows how to care for one another and make the best of a difficult and challenging situation. This is a reminder of how in recent times neighbors pulled together after Hurricane. Matthew and Irma knocked out utility services for days disrupting our normal daily lives. I observed neighbors helping neighbors, cleaning up debris, sharing essentials, cooking and delivering meals to those in need. As we know now, this is such a time. As of today, Thursday, April 2nd, the Florida Department of Health had confirmed 48 cases of coronavirus in Brevard County, including cases in our city. The fact that we have seen so few cases in our area underscores the need for all of us to continue to radically adhere to the Centers for Disease Control guidelines for social distancing, hand washing, and especially staying at home if you are sick and avoid close contact with people who are sick. The state of Florida remains under a state of emergency. Both Brevard County and the city Titusville have declared local state emergencies, which underscores the severity of the worldwide pandemic. The health and safety of our citizens is the top priority. The business of the city government must go on during crisis like this. For that reason, the city council is meeting tonight, but under different circumstances. At this meeting, city council will determine when the next city council meeting will be held, and given the latest governor's executive order to stay home unless it is essential that you are out, we will determine how the meeting will be conducted. Social distancing will be observed at all of our future meetings. We are encouraging citizens to participate in the governing process, but with this order, it may be by some other method than being physically present in the city council. We have closed our city facilities, all of them, to the general public. Our staff, however, continues to provide essential services to you through the use of technology and telephones. Our Public Safety, Public Works, and Water Resources Departments are all continuing essential services with a minimum of disruption to you. Our city emergency management team continues close coordination with our Brevard County Emergency Management Partners. We will continue to disseminate information to you through various methods such as city websites, social media, and press releases. For up-to-date information, you may call 211-daily between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Additionally, you can call Florida Department of Health Call Center at 866-779-6121, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. The quality of people in our community is once again showing up during times of crisis. I'm already seeing it here in our city through caring to one another and by living our faith that this too will pass. Please adhere to the governor's latest executive order to stay at home if it's not essential for you to be out. Thank you for watching. God bless you. Stay healthy and stay safe. Welcome to the special city council meeting, Titusville City Council meeting on April 2nd, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. We have a quorum, and I will call this meeting to order just so everyone knows what's going on. There are three of us present, and there's a majority, and two are by phone present, and so we will hear them when they will make themselves known, and we'll go from there. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
You don't have to be on the air because there's a delay in your speaking, so it was kind of, we were running over each other. But thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
That's all right. That's no problem. We're learning as we go. I declare this meeting open. We have two, the purposes of this meeting is as follows. Process of conducting future public meetings. Council will discuss the process of conducting future public meetings and what that will take. Public comment. As a special meeting, comments from the public present must relate directly to the agenda items. Okay? And I think the next part is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to describe what the temporary procedures for your meeting will be followed tonight. Number one, only one member of the public will be allowed in the council chambers at a time to speak. Number two, seating for those members of the public wishing to speak in the council chambers will be provided in City Hall lobby in accordance with policies from federal, state, and local health officials for social distancing and group gatherings. Number three, individuals, speakers shall enter the council chambers when directed to do so and shall be heard in accordance with the city's policies for public participation. Number four, no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstration aids will be permitted in the council chambers. Speakers are permitted to have a sign with them during their designated speaking time, provided the sign is held by the speaker and is to be removed at the conclusion of the speaker's time. Number five, speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19. Any persons exhibiting symptoms will not be permitted into the City Hall.
You had the next part also.
Yes, sir. And what staff is needing from council tonight is, number one, how many regular city council meetings would you like to have during the month of April? Our charter says we have to have a minimum of one meeting, and staff recommends having a meeting in April, which you are doing now, and then you can move your meeting to May or you, the next two meetings that could be scheduled are on April 14th and/or April 28th. Second item would be, do you want to continue the cancellation of all advisory boards during the month of April? Staff does recommend canceling all advisory boards during the month of April. There's nothing pressing that needs to go before the advisory boards currently. And number three, and this is the big one, is how do you want to conduct your upcoming meeting? If you schedule it for the 14th, which it's currently scheduled, we have an agenda ready, and we are ready to use this format if you're comfortable using this format. Should you choose to use some different format, such as everybody calling in or we find a different way to conduct a meeting, we're going to need a little bit of time to put that together. We're not prepared to do that at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to kind of work backwards here, I guess. I feel the way we're doing it this evening is probably the best way available at this point. I'm really concerned about many unknowns, including something we had at the beginning where we weren't all here. If we're totally on a, on a meeting on the air, not present, if somebody drops off and we don't have a quorum or whatever, then we all go phones. I think it's safer to do it the way we're doing it tonight, including with the speakers coming in to speak. So I'll open it up to you, gentlemen. Yes, sir, your next.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in complete agreement with you. I think this is the safest way for us to do it, and also it allows us to do the business of the city. So I'm totally with that. I do have a question about the process, if you will, as far as, we're going to discuss this, but does the public have a right to speak before we make a decision on this?
Yes, sir. That's what we, we have public comment. So before you decide what you want to do, we'll bring the members of the public up one-on-one, one at a time to express their views.
Okay. So based on what I'm hearing, you say, Mr. Mayor, we're actually going to start with the format of the meeting before we do anything else. So that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's what our primary thing is at this point. Members Stokel?
Yeah, that's my comment.
Members Stokel?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I was going to say, I like this format as well. My only concern is I would like to see some type of process set up for citizens that don't wish to come in person and still have their concerns or comments be heard, whether that's through, I've looked at what some other municipalities are doing. Some of them are either allowing them to call in and they'll have a number. Some of them are having an email where they can send in an email process. I just would like to have something somewhat official that we can promote and tell citizens, this is the way that you can still have your voice heard without having to come out right now.
Anybody want to comment on that?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm not sure how efficient that's going to be. I do know that there is a way that people can call in and be heard at a meeting, and if we're going to do that, I would suggest maybe doing that as opposed to emails. Yeah, but one of the questions I had was, is there a way that we can have people remain in the lobby and speak and have it, have us be able to hear and see these people speak as opposed to having us bringing them up to council chambers?
We can take a look at that. I think we have the technology to do that.
I think that would be a lot safer than having people exposed to us, us being exposed to the public, both ways. I think it's just safer to have the least amount of people in a room.
One thing to consider, we have 10 metal chairs set up in the lobby currently, so that's the limit of what we can have in that lobby area. So if you have more than 10 members of the public that would like to participate, we'll have to find other places to locate them and also set up the television so they can watch.
And that could be a problem, although I really would be surprised if more than people, 10 people showed up.
Yeah, which is, I, I
Wait, wait now. Wait, continue. Member Nelson?
No, let's, let Sarah, Miss Stokel go.
Members Stokel, go ahead.
Yeah, to Dylan's point with that, and having that certain limit, that's kind of why I was thinking it would be nice if we had some type of way for them to, I've even seen some, one municipality is having pre-recorded messages just being played, which seems kind of efficient, and I think they're limiting it to two minutes. That way, I really would try to like to limit citizens having to come out. One, because I don't think they should be coming out right now, and two, we only have limited capacity for them being there anyway, which would go into our other discussion on how many meetings we want to have, depending on what's really pressing. I'd like to limit that as well, just because, for the sake of being able to still conduct business for what we need to do, but also still kind of having that process where we are, including the public, and the public's not feeling like they're excluded from the process because of what's happening.
Are you, are you through, Mayor?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Oh, I thought I was number two.
Yeah, my light keeps going out. I got, I've been one three different times. I don't know what's happening.
It's your next. Hi. I think that this is a good scenario. I think it's important that we have visibility within our city and that they see that we're here doing what we do and trying to do our best. I had not thought about the emailing in or the calling in. That concerns me a little bit in a lot of ways. I don't want it to become a, you know, a call-in show, and don't misunderstand me. I want to hear from the people, and I think in my four years here, the people have done a good job of being heard. I don't know the answer to that. I certainly don't want to do anything to keep anybody from being heard, but I think we've all heard enough call-in shows that people are a little different when they're calling in on the phone eight or nine miles away than they are when they stand at the podium. I don't know that we, and even here, earlier on with you guys calling in, we have technical difficulties, and now all of a sudden, you know, is it the conspiracy theory that the person wasn't heard the way they wanted to be heard? All of that concerns me, and maybe it's old school, but I'm kind of used to seeing somebody in front of me and, you know, making eye contact and feeling their passion and all those things. So that concerns me. Email, I don't know how we would do email. I don't know how we would do the email part, and again, anybody who gets cut off or they had the wrong email address and, oh, I didn't get heard, that concerns me. I also get the not coming out. I'd like to see how this works. Perhaps we minimize our meetings so we don't have the problem of people not being heard and, meaning that this is going to come to an end. I don't know when, and I don't want to not meet, but I also, I would need to hear more about how we can be assured that, you know, and when people call in, how do you know who they really are? I mean, you know, I can tell you I'm somebody on a phone, or I can borrow somebody else's phone. I don't really know who they are when they're speaking to me. So I, you know, I have some concerns with the call-in. It's almost a little bit of an anonymous kind of thing that scares me. I want the person to be who they are and say what they have to say, and I'll sit here all night to listen to them.
I share your concerns. We have to limit it somehow, and with a lot of people staying home, we probably have a lot of people calling in that wouldn't normally be interested in what we're doing possibly. But think about it, if you had a 100, 30, three-minute limitation, but you had 100 calls and you had to let all of them speak, it would be an awful long meeting. And so there has to be some way to regulate that. I am frankly more comfortable with the system we're proposing to use right now, and if that doesn't work or if there are issues that we hear about from the public, we can reconsider the open line type of thing or anything that isn't well-regulated, which includes the emails. But, Lieutenant Jordan?
Okay. Thank you. After listening to Vice Mayor DeSoto, I think, and I understand what council member Stokel is asking for, and I think it makes a lot of sense to make sure that we have the people to speak. I kind of like the idea of an email because you will know exactly who it is, hopefully, you know, they could use somebody else's email. How soon does the agenda go out before we have a meeting?
Normally, on a Tuesday city council meeting, the agenda is published by noon on Thursday prior.
Thursday prior. So that's enough time for them to look at the agenda, and if they have any concerns or they want to tell us something or let us know how they feel about a certain thing, I think an email would be good, and then we can get those before the meeting and read them before we have a discussion on things. They would be heard that way. I don't like the telephone thing at all. I think that that's just going to cause a lot of problems, and you're right. It's just like social media, people hide behind that, and they can say all kinds of things and can get very nasty, and that is not a good thing for us to do. I think we have a, I like, actually, I like this, the way it is, but I certainly want to make sure that the people have a right to speak. And I think the email, because of the circumstances we're in, is probably the purest way we can do it. Or we can continue to do what we have, let them know that they can come to the meeting and sit downstairs, and we'll see how this thing goes. I'm not sure if we even have anybody downstairs right now, but we can see how it works for sure. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I totally agree. One second. I totally agree with the both of you. The open mic gives me all kinds of problems. But also with the email, we'd have to regulate that in some form. I mean, if we get a tremendous amount of emails, we'll be here reading those. So how do we, anybody has a suggestion, I'm certainly open to it as to how to regulate it. We'd have to put a certain number of words, which would equal about three minutes, because that's the time they would normally get, and that's the time we probably should stick to, or even lessen it, I guess. But I, you know, if we get a tremendous amount of emails, we're, it's going to be uncontrollable. I mean, it's going to be undoable, frankly. But I'm going to go on to let other people speak here. Members Stokel?
I'm sorry. It was
I think it was showing.
Well, that's not the way it's shown on here, but that's fine. Go right, Member Nelson.
I tend to agree with you, and what Vice Mayor DeSoto said was, was right. This is not going to go on forever. And assuming we have a meeting this month and a meeting next month, we're talking two meetings. So I'm okay with the way it is, although I would like to keep the people in the lobby. And I'm okay with the emails, as long as we limit the emails in some shape or fashion to, you know, you get 200 words or less, something to that effect. Because it needs to be finite. This is how much, how much time we give a lot to each person. And it's only going to be a couple, hopefully, it's only going to be a couple of meetings. Does that help?
It's all good input. That's, that's fine. If you're through, I'll go on to Member Stokel.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you a question.
Members, Members Stokel, you're recognized.
Thank you. So I saw that the county commission meeting, they had somebody email in and they read the email on record. I'm wondering if we could try that method and if we can, in doing so, say for some reason we get inundated with a ton of emails, we can just, we don't read them, but we can still have them part of the record and we read them prior to the meeting, though, but they don't have to be read on record? I don't know if that's allowed or not.
I'm not sure I quite understand that. I mean, if it's about something that's going on that night, can we postpone it till the, till the next meeting? Is that what you're saying?
So I, what I'm getting at, I guess, is, so say people email in and they email a particular item, or they email under, for like petitions and requests. In theory, I would like those to be read. In theory, we would not get too many of them. However, just say, for instance, that we happen to get 100, and it's not doable to read every one, is it possible, because we will still be getting the emails as council members, I would assume, that we read them, you know, on our own prior to the meeting, and then the clerk's office is able just to have those, a copy of those emails to put on the record, but they don't necessarily have to be read at the meeting? I don't know if that's allowed or not.
City Attorney?
There are cities that have done it both ways. I would suggest if we are going to accept emails as a way of having the public comment on items, they should go to a particular website, maybe the clerk or another one. They will then be disseminated to all council members prior to the meeting so that you have access and can read them before the meeting, and all emails should be made part of the record.
That sounds very workable.
Now, some also read the emails, and they limit them to so many words, which they estimate to be about two or three minutes, whether that's 300 words, 400 words, and they read the emails into the record. So it's done both ways. But at a minimum, I would suggest that you allow emails prior to the meeting. You can set a time limit up to a certain time so that they can properly be disseminated to each of you before the meeting, and they will, they will become part of the record. Whether or not you read those, you would need to clarify that so we could put that in the notice, because the way we're going to conduct these meetings, that notice has to be provided of that procedure to the public so they understand how they're going to participate.
Member Jordan?
When I first started speaking about the emails, my assumption was we weren't reading the emails in the meeting. We're reading, reading them prior to the meeting, and again, they are going to be part of the public record, but I was not looking for us to read any of the emails before. We've got them. We can see what they are thinking about before we make our decision. I don't see any purpose of reading the emails in the meeting.
I don't disagree with that. Members Stokel?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I see no other lights.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Emails can, you know, I'm, I get emails every day. You get emails every day. I, you know, respond where I can, when I can, when it's appropriate. I'm not afraid to hear anything. I mean, I want to hear everything, but I'm also concerned that, you know, I think you are thinking the same thing. You know, the people who come here, whatever issue it may be, the people who have come here, we have spent, we've been here past midnight more than once, and we're not afraid to do that. I just think that if we, you know, petitions and requests comes up and you just go ahead and open email, oh, you know what? I would like one of these, and I want one of those, and I'd like this. And next thing you know, we've got, you know, 47 emails with, you know, the wish list. And I just want to make sure that we're not losing time on the things we've been focused on and we're moving forward with, and the people probably in the lobby, and the people who have been here week after week or month after month, we're working hard, and I think we're doing a really good job. I don't want to get our whole game plan distracted because of this. Now, that being said, I'm all for the emails. We get them anyway. And I'm all for emails. I'm all for putting them in the record. I'm all for whatever is on anybody's mind. I don't think this issue changes the fact that people have been communicating with us on a regular basis anyway. I don't think it should be any different. Quite honestly, we shouldn't receive any more emails now than we did before, because quite honestly, they're emailing us if they are interested right now. So why would they suddenly decide they're going to start emailing differently because it's going to be part of a meeting? That concerns me. And I know we're still trying to figure that part out. My feeling probably is this style right now, and the next time, and we'll talk about that here in just a second, but if we want to run a full meeting, the first time we do it, I think this would be the way we try to do it. And then if we didn't think that was very good or whatever, and again, I think, remember Nelson noted, well, if we just have one meeting this month and one meeting in May, and City Manager, you noted on that, that we could probably be okay with that? Okay, so if we're okay with one meeting in April, and don't misunderstand me, anybody out there, oh, they don't want to meet, yeah, we do want to meet, and we meet regularly. And like I said, we've met past midnight if need be. But this is a very unique time, and we don't want anybody to not be heard, but obviously we are under some, some laws right now that says you're not supposed to come out, you're supposed to keep six feet, you can't have more than 10 people in a room. That's a difficult way to try to get everybody to be heard the way that we're used to hearing you. So I think that if we can successfully do our business with a meeting this month and a meeting in May, Lord, I hope that we're doing better in June and can get back to a normal situation. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. I don't want to get so abstract and so diluted that nobody's heard and that nothing's taken as serious or we're hearing it like, not taken serious, but we're not hearing it as clearly because they're not able to stand there or they're not able to come up one after another after another. People are very busy with other things right now, and that's obviously life and death kind of thing. So I think that we need to put all this in perspective and move forward, make sure the people are heard, make sure the people are heard, but make sure the people are safe and that we don't dilute their message because we're trying to get so many people to email or call us for a meeting.
If there are, nobody else out there that has a light, because all I have is Member Jordan's, and you're next if I don't hear anything. You're next.
Just a simple question. I'm still trying to understand the process. Because we got three things that we're going to be deciding on, we're going to have the member of the public, if there's anybody out there, to come
There's actually nobody from the public.
Okay, then we don't, we don't have a problem then. Because I was just wondering, we talk about this one thing first and then have the public speak, then we talk about the second thing, have the
No, no, no. No.
then we talk about the second thing, have the, but apparently there's somebody.
No, we're not going to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's a moot point, so. If we had to, it would be done collectively. But, okay. The next two items are fairly easy, I think. Let's go to, since we started with three, we'll go to two next.
I'm in the meetings?
Yeah. Do you want to continue the cancellation of all board meetings during April? Staff recommends canceling all advisory boards in April. During your May regular meeting, you can direct restarting advisory board meetings. Any comments on that? Yes, your first.
I, I think we should cancel them for sure, just for safety sakes, and I don't think there is anything really important coming.
No, sir, we, we checked with staff, and nothing's pressing that needs to be heard during the month of April for, for the advisory boards.
Okay, so I, I'll go along with what staff.
Member Stokel?
Oh, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just going to say, I, I agree with staff that we should just have the one meeting in April. But I'm a little confused, because we're having a meeting in April, so we would have.
Yeah, what I'm recommending, you have two possible dates if you want to have a meeting. It's the 14th or the 28th. I think if you, the agenda that we have currently prepared for the 14th is ready to go. We can do it. But I think if you wait till the 28th, we'll have a little bit more guidance on the meetings and that stuff. And, and if I need to do another special meeting based on that between now and the 28th, I'll do another special meeting and say, look, we need to adjust how you had planned to do your meeting on the 28th.
Okay, well, based on that, then, then I agree with staff that we should have one meeting in April. I suggest we do the 28th to give staff enough time to get this right.
Well, this counts as one meeting in April. You're saying it, the second meeting? Okay.
Yeah, this does count.
That's what I was asking.
You can count this as your one meeting in April, if you wish.
Okay, so we have.
But, but what I don't want to have happen is, then we get to May, the first week in May, then we have gone almost a month and a half without any having any meetings, and your agenda might be packed at that point.
Yeah, we don't want a packed agenda, for sure. So, so I, I'm suggesting that we have another meeting on the 28th, to give staff enough time to get their act together, and then we can decide what's going to happen in May. But I guess it's two, two things. The, the board meetings, the, the board meetings, in my mind, should be canceled for the month of April, and then our next meeting would be on the 28th. That's my suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, the next light I have is, is Member Stokel.
I was just going to say, I agree with Member Jordan on both of those.
Okay. Any other? Yeah.
And I'm not sure if I have a light or not.
You, you don't, you don't have one on there now, but what, I, I think the Vice Mayor was next, though.
Yeah, and again.
He doesn't have a light either.
Yeah, my, my, I keep going number one, it goes zero. One, zero. I don't know what's going on with this thing, so I just keep hitting it. Anyway, I don't want to, I want to make sure that we don't lose the momentum that I feel we have as a council, that I feel we have in this. I realize we've lost momentum due to what's going on out there. You know, I get that. The United States economy and everything else is, it's, that's secondary. But momentum is, is going to be a tough situation. I want to make sure that we don't ever look at ourselves and say, gosh, I wish we would have met, or I wish we would have done this. And, and I would lean on you, because right now it sounds to me like you're saying, we're okay. We could even go to the first week in May to meet, and we'd be fine.
Yes, sir, that, that would be the case, but I would, I would recommend that you still have a, one meeting in April.
Okay, and I'm not saying we don't, because I also heard you say that this meeting counts as one meeting in April.
It, it does.
Okay, so I'm fine with, with, with April 28th. I'm fine with April 14th. I'm fine with both of them, and so that's what we need to do. But I would also say that the, and I like this format for what we're doing, going through right now. I mean, you know, let's be realistic about where we're at. As I drove to this meeting, I'm just shaking my head as I go by Village Inn, and it's shut down. And I go by Orleans Restaurant, and it's shut down. And, I mean, you know, closed, closed is a better word for it. Closed. You know, shut down, that's not a good word. Closed. And then for us to say, okay, let's come out and come to a council meeting, it's, it's a little presumptive, I think. So, but we also want to give everybody that opportunity, so I get that as well. I'll go to one more step, because I've thought about it three or four times, and I don't want to get too far away. I would assume that what we will do is we will rotate members, meaning that the next meeting, Member Jordan and I would be the ones who are not here. I'm sure that the two members on the phone right now feel the same way that I will. And that is, I haven't missed a meeting, or a workshop, or anything else in four years, so it'll be very awkward not being here, but it would be the right thing to do in that there's, you know, I'm here one meeting, and then Member Stokel would sit here the next meeting, and same on the other end.
Just for the record, I have volunteered, since I'm mayor, to be at all of the meetings, so that would.
Well, as you absolutely should, no question. And then that wasn't a question to me. The question was, as we have two on the phone here and two here, I'm thinking the next meeting will be on the phone.
Correct. I think that's fair.
Member Stokel?
I see what you're saying. I would prefer to still call in, because I'm living with someone that has immune compromise, and I would, I'm trying to limit my exposure because of that. So I would still like to call in, and I think that with the new guidelines, we can still have more people call in than just two. From the governor orders, I believe.
Well, if that's how it works, then I would, I would like to be here. And I would say, you know, quite honestly, as a Vice Mayor, I would not like to not be here. So if she's willing to do that, I just, you know, I didn't know that would be the case. But if Member Stokel's willing to continue in that capacity, I would like to sit here for all the meetings.
I'm sure that can be arranged.
Okay.
Can be part of the motion.
Sure. Mayor, I'd just like to state, I would state that that is your intent. I certainly would hate to get locked into a process that if someone forbid, can't come, that we would have to change the process. So I'd say it's your intent to have you here and to rotate, that that's fine. But just so you know, the law does allow each of you to call in. So you're not required to have three here. And I understand that it's your intent, and, and that's great, and we will have three to the extent we can, and stay at temp. But I'll let you know that the law does allow, in the event, for some reason in the future, more of you cannot come, you are allowed to participate by telephone. Because we do not know what the future holds.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other people that don't have lights? I have Member Jordan up, if nobody else has a, a non-light situation. Member Jordan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say.
I don't have a problem being here, so, and, and I also like the idea of rotating. So if Jolynn can't make it, I don't have a problem doing it. Jolynn can make it, I don't have a problem with that either. So it's, it's totally up to what the council wants to do. I'm, I'm all for it, for sure.
I, I don't see any problem with that. I imagine you'd go through the city staff to make a decision on, not make a decision, but if, if there is a problem with rotating, city staff would make sure the connection is made.
I would plan on being there the next meeting.
Okay, that's great. That's great. But it, it's, it's just pointing out, the, the City Attorney pointed out that we could have two up here and three out there, or any combination. In addition to that, both, both the gentlemen here said they'd be willing to acquiesce to the requirements that you have asked for. Member Stokel would prefer staying home. Vice Mayor said he would come in, and Member Jordan said he would be glad to do it either way, depending on what, what you, you wanted, Member Nelson, for any particular meeting. But of course, you would have to give him notice through the City Manager. Right? Everybody on board? Okay, the next item is, did we kind of address this? But is that? Yeah, did we address that? Okay.
Mayor, could I point out something as well? This type of format really tends to create issues when it comes to quasi-judicial proceedings, in which you take evidence, swear in witnesses, cross-examination. So what I would suggest is authorize the City Manager, to the extent possible, not to include quasi-judicial items on your meetings in this format. And I'm understanding that we do not have applications currently, so that won't be a problem. I just wanted to let you know that I would suggest, to the extent possible, not to do quasi-judicial under this format.
Well, what happens when we have to do a quasi-judicial?
Then we will, by that time, have some procedures in place to, to handle that.
Okay. Okay, I, I hope someone has written all this down. Would you like to make the motion? All right.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Also, each of you should have received a draft form of a resolution.
Now you got me to find it.
When was that sent out? Do you have a copy?
Yes, it's a question.
Yeah.
What it is, a resolution sets forth all the executive orders that we are currently under.
Yeah, that was, that was long.
Yeah.
That was very long.
And I actually had the memorandum that I provided you of law that had all the executive orders and explaining Chapter 286 that requires public participation.
Right.
In addition, I provided you a draft resolution for the procedures to follow for our meetings in the future under the executive orders. As, as you'll see in there, at the beginning, we suggested if you're going to have the city hall chambers open, like tonight, it provides the procedures on which, under which we'll do that, which are the procedures we're doing this evening. It also provides that, in the event, as an alternative, you may allow email comments to be provided to you, and you're authorizing the City Manager to create that process, so that emails and comments get to you for your future meetings, as we discussed. So I want to let you know, we put that in resolution format, so if there's a motion, you could have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign that resolution, which will be amended to, to coincide with your direction tonight. So that was a draft? So you can authorize the mayor to sign the resolution tailored to your vote tonight.
And that is my motion.
I'm not sure what that, what you've decided.
There's no number on this motion.
The clerk will assign it. I, I don't have a number for it.
Okay, this.
What I heard in summary, Member Jordan, is that the council would like to have their next meeting on the 28th of April, using this format, and canceling the all advisory boards for the month of April.
Right.
And if, if I need to call a special meeting between now and the 28th to adjust that, that you're authorized me to do so.
And what about the quasi-judicial thing? Should that be in there, too?
Right, we, we just wanted to make sure that you, you understand that we will not be putting, to the extent possible, not putting any quasi-judicial items on your agenda for meetings that are conducted in this, under this resolution.
I mean, should that be part of the motion?
Certainly. And, and also authorizing him, like I said, to allow the email comments to be gathered and provided and made part of the record for your meetings. Not that you'll read them.
Just so we're clear, if, if I may interrupt you for a minute. Is there anything we discussed tonight and, and came to a conclusion on, not in here?
No, no, sir, but I may tailor that to the emails, not to telephone.
To what occurred here this evening, right? And I think there, it was clear how everybody went on everything. Is, is everybody satisfied with, well, you can make the motion, we'll see.
But I think I, I did. Based on what the City Manager repeated, we're going to have a meeting, one meeting in April, April 28th. We're going to cancel all advisory boards for April, and we're going to continue with this format that we have tonight.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Well, one addition to that, please, just for the record. And the City Manager noted, and I just want to make sure that the people understand that, that if we have an issue, and we have something in city business that we need to take care of, we can get it advertised and call a meeting, a special meeting, and we will deal with that.
Absolutely.
The second thing, I want to make sure that everyone hears and understands.
Wait one second. Is that the Second Amendment?
I, I have the authority to do that now.
Yeah, and I don't know, that has to be part of the motion. I just want to get that, this on the table before, you know, we, we go further. Because the next thing I want to make sure that everybody hears, is that if we have any board or commission, that an emergency comes up and you feel that there has to be a meeting, that can be called as well. I, I understand that, but I'd like it to be said.
Mayor, I'd probably like to clarify that this includes canceling the CRA meeting for the 12th, not just the council meeting.
Well, isn't that a commission?
Well, we're, we're canceling all of them except.
Right, you said the council meeting and boards. I also want to clarify that that included, you said advisory boards. CRA is not an advisory board, so I want to clarify that you will be canceling the CRA.
Oh, I'm sorry, CRA. Yes, I didn't do that.
That's part of my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
Yes, can I just clarify?
Yes.
With regards to the email. Thank you. In regards to the email, I think that's covered under the resolution under Item C, where it gives the City Manager authority to allow alternative forms for citizen input. So I, I just want to clarify that we will have that process. Because I, I just want to make sure that we're not sending mixed messages to citizens, saying, stay home right now, the governor's ordered to stay home for the entire month, and then yet, your only way for you to get your comments heard is by coming in. So I just want to make sure that that email process will be there.
Is that part of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of your second, sir?
Yes, sir.
Great. So the clerk wanted to clarify that Miss Member Jordan's motion is to approve the resolution consistent with this discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Requires roll call vote.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Roll call vote, please.
I wrote it. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Is there any other business to be conducted this evening?
There's no members of the public present.
No members of the public, so with that, I will declare.
Can we, just one real, real quick second? I think that maybe just, maybe around the horn, real quick. But I, I would like to say something real quick. And I know, first of all, Mayor, I want to thank you, and, and I guess the words congratulate, on, on the two messages you got out. I think that that's, to me, that's a very difficult thing, to stand there and have this, I guess it was a teleprompter of some sort. I thought that came across very well. I think that your communication and City Manager, your guidance on that. City Manager has gotten, it seems like two or three times a day, reports out to the council and staff and the city on what's going on with this virus, and I appreciate that very much. And again, Mayor, your communication's been outstanding. I was telling somebody today, this very much, and I, all of you, all of you, all of you, 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 you had to have felt the same way I did at some point, where you're waiting for a hurricane. I mean, you're, you're, you're kind of in place, and you're waiting for, you know, everything's, things are closing because of the hurricane, or whatever it may be. In this case, it's a virus, but it reminds me of Hurricane Charlie. If you were around for Hurricane Charlie, it was one that was on the Gulf, and it wasn't going to do much to us, and it was just kind of going to go north of Tampa. And then all of a sudden, it changed, and it started shooting towards central Florida, and we started paying a whole lot more attention. And then all of a sudden, it comes up, and we're in the northeast quadrant of that, that storm. And we got a whole lot more of that when it was all said and done, and we all go outside, and we see it hit, and man, we got a lot more than we expected. So I guess what I'm getting at is, I think we need to be prepared for the fact that, and I'll speak for myself, there was a time when I didn't think this was going to be that big a deal. Certainly, there were hotspots in our country that were. And then all of a sudden, like Charlie, it kind of moved a little closer, and it's, oh, this is getting serious. And then we're hearing the numbers this week off these models that I don't even want to repeat, that have us all thinking, this, woo, this is something. So with that being said, I would just say, you know, we're doing a great job of hunkering down. I spoke earlier about driving up here, and the fact that several places that I'm so used to seeing, I, I look at Village Inn, and I drink a lot of coffee, so I, I really feel comfortable driving by Village Inn. I know all the waitresses by first name, and everybody remembers Ruby working there for so many years. And that being said, it was an uncomfortable feeling, seeing that it wasn't open. So we're in a very uncomfortable feeling, we're hunkered down, and we're doing what we got to do. And I just, and again, I think the, the city. And I just, and again, I thank the city government, I thank the mayor, I thank the City Manager, and the entire staff, because I think you guys have done an excellent job of keeping us aware of what you can make us aware of. Because let's face it, we're watching the President, and we're watching his team, and things are changing rapidly. And I just think that for the people of Titusville, you guys have done a great job of keeping us informed. And City Manager, I appreciate your emails. I'm doing my very best to know what I can know. And a lot of citizens ask me questions, and if I don't have it, I can ask you, and I get it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. That was very well said. Since we're making comments, I just want the public to realize that what is coming down in the way of rules and so forth, the city of Titusville has the responsibility to let you know what's happening in those areas. And the City Manager has done a fine job of that, and I've done a part of it. But we don't have a health department, and we don't have scientists in the city auspices. Health Department is with the county, and those, the orders that we are getting are from a national level, a state level, and a county level. Our responsibility is to let you know about it, and in some cases, to make sure it's adhered to. But I've had complaints about the things that we are putting forth, and we don't put them forth. It's national, state, or county. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. But we will certainly try and get you any information that you need, and it was mentioned in there. 211, I would say is probably one of the best ways to go. I've had some, several experiences, and it's been good. Sometimes it takes a little longer than others, though. With that, anybody else like my comment? Member Jordan?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor Diesel, for the opportunity. This is a trying time for all of us, and it's very personal for all of us. But I would like for our citizens to think of this as a real positive time for us to get together with our families and maybe hug them a little bit more. In my mind, the country was going in the wrong direction as far as we were dividing ourselves, the good and the bad, the black and white, ugly, not racially wise, but just, we were just separating. And we forgot, in my mind, our first love. And to me, this is a good time for us to pause and think about what's important. Pause and understand that, you know, family is important, and all this other stuff is trivial. So let's take this time, apparently, you know, this virus is bringing us all together. And it's very difficult, especially with families. You've got to be real careful about what's going on with families, because when the dad or mom, who are the breadwinners, they don't have a job anymore, there's a lot of pressure on that family. And usually, loved ones are the ones that get hurt when something like this happens. So I think we, as each other's neighbors, should be there for our neighbors. If anyone needs help, let's make sure we are helping them. If I remember right, I saw like 3.3 million people have filed for unemployment. That is crazy. I mean, we were down to almost nothing in unemployment, and here we are now with a lot of people unemployed. My business has suffered greatly. We're down to about 5% of what I normally do at this time, 5%. Yet I decided to keep all my employees. And, you know, it was because during the good times, I knew I needed to save you for the bad times, not knowing it was going to be this bad, for sure. But I actually, I thank everyone who's in charge. I thank the mayor for doing a good job. The spirit of Titusville, in my mind, is different than any other city in Brevard County. I just think that we have good City Manager, good attorney who keeps us straight, and we have good administration who is very focused on making sure everything is correct in our city. So to all the citizens, just know that the leaders of your city feel your pain, have empathy, have sympathy, going through the same things you are. And we just want us all to come out of this thing better than what, when we came into it. So let's just pray to God that he deliver us from this, and just love your family and love your neighbor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, very well. I feel I would be remiss, I mean, we talked about the staff in general, and that is certainly true. But particularly, I want to speak about our first responders, police and fire. They are not only doing their jobs, they, on a daily basis, are putting their lives on the line to take care of our citizens and respond to everything that is happening now, and not, never knowing what they're going to be going out to. So they're very special people, and I know we all appreciate them very much.
Can we add our-
Yes.
-healthcare providers?
Certainly.
Is that mayor?
Certainly.
And can we, yes, I mean, they're on the front lines, and that's got to be a very proposition, to walk to work with people who are ill and not know if you could catch it, if you could bring it home to your family. So bless those people.
Absolutely.
And let's remember them.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? I see no lights. If not, at this point, we have, I think, said everything we wanted to say. So I'll declare this meeting adjourned.